Welcome to the City of Madison Heights. Tonight is the regular council meeting for March 28, 2016. The time is 7:31. I'd like to call this meeting order. Will the clerk please give roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Here.
Councilman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Gettings?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Could we please have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Scott?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gettings. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the absence of Councilwoman Scott, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on. First up is, we'll have an invocation led by Councilman Corbett. If you could all please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We need to appoint an acting city clerk. Are there any motions to appoint Ramona Sanchez?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Gettings. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Ramona Sanchez as the acting city clerk for tonight's meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Presentations? There are none tonight, so we'll go to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on to item A under the agenda. Business license initial and business license temporary and seasonal. We have several applicants. What is the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Clark, please.
I'd make a motion to approve the four businesses. Number one is the Poorhouse, a barn restaurant. That is a change of ownership. Number two, application to operate National Therapy Services and Physical Therapy Service. This is a new business. Number three, application to operate Chinatown Market, an Asian grocery store. And that is a change of location. Number four, application to operate Ding's Hair Salon, a hair salon on Dequinder. And this is a new business. And we also have Hollywood Market for temporary and seasonal for outdoor sales.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Second to motion.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on this motion? Okay, it's a large motion to approve business licenses A 1 through 4 initial and business license temporary seasonal number one. Motion by Councilman Clark, supported by Councilman Gettings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Congratulations. We don't have any non-commercial business licenses, so we'll move on to item B, public hearings. There are none. Next on the agenda, is there anything on tonight's agenda that members of the audience would like to be brought forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll go meeting open to the public. If anyone would like to address city council, please come to the podium. It's your option. I'm not requiring you, but please give your name and address for the record. And if you could kindly limit your comments to three minutes or less.
My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is having a membership rally April 14th at 6:30. That's a Thursday. We're going to be having raffles, door prizes. We want to exchange ideas. We'll be having beverages and snacks. Also, a few, on April 19th, the next Tuesday, we're going to have our regular third Tuesday meeting. And at that time, you get to tell us what we did wrong. And that's, they'll be at 7 o'clock. And everyone is welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Meeting's open to the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council, Gary McGilvery, 926 Tanglewood. Couple dates I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of. The first will be Sunday, April 24th, will be the annual cleanup at Nature Center. Stop by, give us a hand. We're just picking things up around there. It starts at 9:00 a.m. and will run until noon. It's only going to run three hours, so we'll have food there provided afterwards. And so bring your gloves and your rake and come on over. The other date I wanted to give you was for Madison Heights Youth Assistance, our first fundraiser since we're back in business. It's going to be held on Wednesday, April 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00. And that's at the Plumbers Hall Local 98 over on Horace Brown Drive. And it's just to raise a few funds so we can provide camp opportunities and things like that for the kids. If you can, stop by and help support youth assistance.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Would anyone else like to address city council? Please come to the podium now.
Jim Capizo, 863 Vannoy. Couple weeks ago, it was very windy on garbage collection today, and rizzle where somebody put the containers in the backyard, so that was very nice of them.
Thank you. They always appreciate positive feedback. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public? All right, we'll close meeting open to the public. We'll move to item C of the agenda communications. There are none. So item D under the agenda, reports. We have several tonight. Report D1 from the city manager, a resolution for responsible spending of transportation funds in southeast Michigan.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Hartwell and several council members have requested council to consider a resolution in opposition to the I-75 widening and expansion project. And the resolution that is before councils tonight has been modeled after the resolution recently approved at the City of Royal Oak.
Thank you. What is the wish of city council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council adopt as printed the resolution for responsible spending of transportation funds in southeast Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss, please.
Just a couple of items. I know we copied the resolution from the City of Royal Oak, but there is much in it that I believe doesn't really resonate with our city and our community. Namely, the fact that the entire project doesn't have value. A lot of young professionals that I know, including myself, drive to work in Troy or Rochester Hills. And that drive home is a complete logjam at about 16 to Rochester on the I-75 exits. So unless people have sat in that traffic, the idea that it wouldn't provide any benefit to the City of Madison Heights, I just don't see where we can get off saying that it provides no benefit. And that's what this resolution does. There's a lot that I don't like about it. I think the project is too big for its own good. I think that a lot of it's unnecessary. I think that the funding mechanism is absolutely ridiculous and should be done on a county or state level. It should not be forced upon local share when we have to take care of our own roads. But at the same time, there's a lot of absolutes written in this particular resolution, including that this money should be spent on mass transit that wouldn't have much effect at all on the citizens of Madison Heights. There's a lot of talk about adding urban policies that would decrease the urban sprawl and add investment in heavy population centers, which is not the City of Madison Heights. And so I'd like to put on record that I am in favor of the majority of what is in this resolution, but I will be voting against it tonight because there are key statements in here that I do disagree with.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Unlike Mr. Bliss, respectfully, I have a lot more trouble teasing out the positive aspects of the project as it is developed. We are 10, 12 years now removed from when council was first asked to look at this project. And it's an entirely different world right now than it was back then. And I'm pleased that this resolution found its way forward to our table. It dovetails some work we did last summer going after the funding aspects of it. But I'm just a little bit, the congestion that Mr. Bliss refers to, I mean, is there anybody in the room who doesn't think that 20 years from now that the expanded 75 will be clogged again? Because continued bad policy, bad direction by government encouraging, encouraging non-collective or non, what's the word I'm looking for, mass transit options. You know, it's sort of trying to beat a horse. How can you, how can you claim that the options don't work if you don't have any? And there are none on the drawing board. And there are many options. You know, there is electric and bus systems that rely on natural gas, which are much more pleasing to my, to my cheap conservative mind in a lot of respects, but still begin the process of moving this tri-county area, which I understand for 200, no, not 200, 100 years, has been weaned on the auto industry and that mentality. So anyway, I'm, yeah, I'm sure I could find something to quibble with in the resolution, but I think it, I think it accomplishes several things. It puts us on record with our neighbors. There was one other thing I wanted to take exception with. The executive, Oakland County Executive, in his State of the County speech, or it was subsequent, I'm not sure where, but he sort of teased older communities like Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Madison Heights, saying, wow, the only reason you exist is because I-75 was put in in the first place. The gist being that it served its purpose 50, 60, however many years ago. God, it really has been 50, 60 years ago that they put it in. Yeah, but, but I'm going to suggest the collateral damage to the communities and to the tri-county area substantially less than they would have been. And I think, again, it's an entirely different world. If we were, if we were dealing in 25 cent gas and half the number of cars contributing to the ozone and the other problems we have, maybe it might be a valid argument. But I just would ask them to remember, this is 2016. This isn't 1950. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings, please.
I just want to say that I'm kind of in favor of adding the lane, I think, of farther up north where you have four lanes. It seems to spread out and move fairly rapidly. But I'm not happy with the way they took the 2020 and then backed it up a couple of years. They made it pretty hard on us. But I think the concept of adding a lane, I go over the bridge there by the old St. Dennis, which is right there between Madison Heights and goes over 75. And you look down at the traffic and you just go, boy, I'm glad I'm not in that right now. But I think the idea behind it has got some merit, but the funding, you know, hitting us so hard and so quickly, I don't think is fair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion from city council? Good. I think this is exhibit, exhibit A on the inefficiency of urban sprawl. When it takes $4 billion to lay roads to make it easier for people to get further away from the urban core, it would be so much more efficient on our resources as taxpayers if we tried to focus growth from the center. That's why one example was cited. That $4 billion should maybe be spent on public transit, where Madison Heights could benefit with an advanced rapid bus system similar to Grand Rapids and the region surrounding that city. So I will be voting yes on this resolution opposing the expansion of I-75. So we'll call the question. There was a motion by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilman Clark, to adopt as printed the resolution for responsible spending of transportation funds in southeast Michigan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Mayor, do we have a roll call on that?
Yes, we'll begin the vote again with the roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
No.
The motion passes. We'll move on to report D2 from the deputy city manager, a resolution authorizing issuance of pension obligation bonds.
As part of the fiscal year 2017 city goal plan, council adopted the resource-related goal to develop and implement a plan and policy to fully address the city's unfunded liabilities for pension and other post-employment benefits. On February 8, 2016, council approved the resolution authorizing the publication of a notice to issue pension obligation bonds. This notice was published on February 12th, which began a 45-day referendum period which expired today, March 28th. In order to proceed with the issuance of the bonds, staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution authorizing issuance of 2016 limited tax general obligation bonds pursuant to section 518 of Act 34 in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $15,250,000 for the purpose of paying all or a part of the costs of the unfunded pension liability for the general employees to find benefit plan.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark, please.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of the pension obligation bonds.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Great. Is there any discussion from council? Hearing none?
Your Honor?
Oh, Mr. Bliss.
Can we just specify that the amount not to exceed, I think it's 15,250,000?
Mr. Clark, do you agree?
So be it.
Mr. Soltis, do you agree?
Yes.
Any further discussion? The motion will then read, to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of pension obligation bonds not to exceed $15,250,000. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. We'll move on to report D3 from the city manager, the 2016 roads and vehicle ballot proposals.
On December 14th of 2015, again as part of the 2016-17 goal plan, council adopted the following goal proposals. One, to evaluate, identify, prioritize, and create a new long-range, millage-based, comprehensive proposal R3, infrastructure replacement plan, including roads, sewers, and sidewalks, to take before the voters in 2016. And two, to develop a long-range, millage-based, comprehensive proposal V3, vehicle replacement program, to take before the voters in 2016. With voter approval, starting in 2018, the city would launch into the proposal R3 program with reconstruction scheduled for portions of Bretton Woods, Harwood, and Brush. As with the current R2 program, projects would include full reconstruction, modified sectional repairs, sectional repairs, and spot sectional repairs. While not a part of the R3 proposals or funding, water main replacement would also be proposed where needed concurrent with R3 projects and subject to funding through the Water and Sewer Fund. Staff has also been identifying and prioritizing vehicle replacements for the V3 program. The V3 plan would replace 101 vehicles over a 10-year period starting in fiscal year 2018. The focus of these replacements will continue to be police, fire, and street maintenance vehicles, which will require 95% of the funding. Staff and I recommend that council approve the proposed resolution, which establishes August 2, 2016, for voters to consider millage renewals and a 10-year extension for the city's long-range neighborhood roads and vehicle replacement programs.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommended resolution and submit to the voters for consideration the millage renewal and 10-year extension on the August 2nd ballot.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings, second? Great. Is there a discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss, please.
Just a couple of clarifications from staff to the public. First, to clarify that this will not be an extra election. This is just piggybacking off of the primary election that is already set to be held, so it's going to be at no additional cost to the taxpayers. And also, the reason that we're choosing to do it in August versus the November election is because the original proposals do end in July.
And one more thing to add to that, Your Honor?
Please.
And that's correct, but also the August timing gives us time to prepare for the next construction season for road projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I worked on this proposal before I was even on council. And I can see all the good that has done in the last, going on 19 years. I mean, our residents' roads have improved 100%. And we're up to date on our, all of our equipment, especially to the police and the fire department. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any more discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
In sort of an odd way, if you happen to be on one of those streets that's going to be constructed, if we didn't have this project and had to go with the traditional model of creating a tax zone or whatever it is, it would be monstrously expensive to the local community, to the neighborhood that was getting hit, if we did not have in place this road. I'm not quite sure how it would work out, but it would be awfully expensive. This provides a model for dispersing the funds and allows us to address the, those streets, you know, both have more or less heavily trafficked and share that burden. Otherwise, I could very easily see the roads simply getting worse because people saying they couldn't absorb the hit that this, that this mechanism provides. It was good work to Ben and the staff, the run-up to this. They've been working on this for several months. Congratulations on a good job and a good presentation. Thank you. And thank you to the old timer, so to speak, Mr. Clark there, who's been keeping this project going for all these years. Thank you.
Your Honor, I just want to recognize a few of the staff that are here tonight that put a lot of work into this. Deputy city manager Marsh, DPS director Vitale, our city engineers, Tim Germaine and Brad Brickell from NOAAIC and FROSS. We also have our motor pool supervisor here, Terry McGrann, who analyzes our vehicles on a continuing basis, but especially as we, as we geared up for the analysis for V3, to really go through and prioritize and see where we're at. And also our bond counsel, Tom Collins, is here tonight from Miller, Canfield as well, who has always helps us with, helps us stay legal with our bond, our ballot proposal language. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you for that. You know, Madison Heights has a pretty unique history of the taxpayers telling the city how to spend money. I mean, we don't, we just don't have a general fund. Our taxpayers are very engaged with how, how we direct funds. And time and time again, the voters have told the city that we need to invest in the roads and vehicles. Recently, the voters told us to reinvest in the library. And that puts all the control in the voters and the taxpayers' hands and how their dollars are spent. It's also, I think, reflected in the fact that we have so many boards and commissions. I think we have something over, over 150 appointed positions, Parks Board, Planning Board, Multicultural Relations Board. It just shows that our city and our voters and our taxpayers are very engaged in how our government is run. And so this is an example of city staff and the city council, again, asking the voters, we want your input on how the money should be spent. And Mr. Myers?
Your Honor, I left off, left out one obvious staff person. He's on vacation this week, but our community development director, Jim Schaefer, is very much involved in the R3 planning and implementation and is a key part of the team, too.
Well, great. Okay, so let's, let's move on. Any final words from city council before we vote? There's a motion made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilman Gettings, to approve the recommended resolution for the 2016 roads and vehicle ballot proposals establishing the August 2, 2016 ballot for voters to consider the millage renewals and the 10-year extension for the long-range neighborhood roads and vehicle replacement programs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item E, items for future public hearings. There are none tonight, so we'll move on to item F, bid awards and purchases. We just have one tonight from the deputy city manager regarding professional auditing services.
Yes, Your Honor. Also, as part of our goal plan, which was adopted last December 14th, council adopted a proposal based on the recommendation of the Government Finance Officers Association to issue a request for proposals for auditing services for a multi-year contract to evaluate service through a competitive process. Following council's approval of the goal, staff issued the RFP, a request for proposals, and in response, six firms submitted proposals and were evaluated by staff with a focus on expertise and experience within the municipal sector, governmental accounting leadership, client and staff training, timing requirements, fees, and references. The lowest responsible bidder is Plant Moran for the fees quoted in the proposal in a five-year amount of $359,800. Staff and I recommend that council approve a five-year agreement for professional auditing services with Plant Moran, subject to contract approval by the city attorney's office.
What is the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry? Mr. Corbett, thank you.
Your Honor, it's a real pleasure to move to approve the recommendation of staff and to award a five-year contract to professional services agreement with Plant Moran for the providing of auditing and associated services.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss, please.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion from city council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Just a quick clarification, and perhaps staff can verify this, but I believe this is a savings of about $70,000 over what we had projected over the same period for auditing services?
Your Honor, yeah, our current, our current fees are slightly under $100,000, so it would be on a, on an annual basis about 20, 28, 29,000, about that. Thank you.
Any further discussion from city council? I really want to thank staff for going through the bid process. It's, you know, it's convenient that we're sticking with the same contractor, but it also shows the public that we're transparent and that city hall is accessible. And our professional services are open to bid on occasion. And so if you have a new mousetrap to build, come to city council and see if there are any new best practices. And in this case, our current contractor won the discussion, so I'm excited to support this. Any final comments from council? The motion is to approve a five-year contract with Plant Moran for professional auditing services, subject to contract approval by the city attorney's office. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, one clarification. In answer to the question, I just want to be clear, I found it in the report, it's approximately $94,000 over the term of the contract, in terms of, in terms of the savings.
Should we revote procedurally? How should we do that?
It would just be a clarification of my comment, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right, fine. All right, moving on the agenda, Item G, ordinances. There are none. Same with Item H, unfinished business, nothing. So minutes? Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes as printed from the special council meeting on March 14, 2016?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettys.
I believe there might be a typographical error, because I think we exited the first meeting we had two weeks ago about quarter to eight, and I believe we started back here momentarily right after that. But I know we ran at least 10, 12, maybe 15 minutes behind.
Your Honor.
Mr. Myers?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think the issue is more with the beginning time of the regular council meeting minutes, which start at 7:30, and the adjournment of the special meeting was 7:32. So my suggestion would be that we modify the, or correct the regular meeting minutes to reflect a start time of 7:40, I think was closer to what the actual.
Okay, but I believe the time that we exited the first meeting was also printed incorrectly, is what I'm trying to say. Because I know it wasn't 7:30 when we got out of there. We are at least 10 minutes behind. I'm not trying to be a nitpitter, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettys, so the special meeting minutes say the meeting was adjourned at 7:32 PM? Do you believe that's incorrect?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do you know which time? I don't recall the time. I'm relying on the minutes.
I would say 7:40 to 7:43, because we got in here and it was quarter to eight. So take it for what it's worth.
Your Honor? Mr. Bliss?
I can't, and perhaps when Cheryl gets back, she'll be able to ascertain when we ended the special meeting. But the regular meeting, that's going to be timestamped on the video productions equipment. So maybe we could just make the motion for the second motion on the regular council meeting minutes, to have that sync up with the start time on our video recording.
That's fine. So, you know, let's get a motion on the floor. I appreciate this discussion, but can we have a motion for the special meeting, however you want to phrase it? A motion, please, for the special meeting?
Okay, I kind of go along with Mr. Bliss. That sounds like a decent idea to at least get the start time of the regular council meeting. So if we could refer to the videotape with the cable folks to see what time we started the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
If I understand, Councilman Gettys, I think the motion that's being made is a motion to adopt the minutes as amended with the clerk's insertion of the time that the special meeting was adjourned. Is that correct, Mr. Gettys?
Yes.
Do we, Mr. Mayor, do we have a support on that?
Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mayor Proton Bliss?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the minutes as printed with the clerk's insertion of when the time actually occurred?
Was adjourned.
When it was adjourned, when the special meeting was adjourned. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion passes. Can I please have a minute regarding, a motion regarding the regular city council meeting?
Your Honor? Well, that's about three minutes of my life I've lost.
I know.
I'll mimic the language and approve the minutes as printed, subject to final clarification by the clerk as to the start time.
So I heard there was, okay, a motion to approve as printed, subject to when the clerk can identify when the time of the meeting began.
I trust the clerk.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
I'd like to second, please.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All in favor of the motion as stated? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda are appointments. Would anyone on City Council like to make an appointment to any vacancy on boards or commissions?
Your Honor.
There's a mayor's appointment for Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It's a mayor's appointment, and there's a Mr. Richard Lewis who's willing to renew a term, a two-year term, which is expiring April 15. I nominate Mr. Lewis, if anyone would like to bring that appointment to the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term. So that would, he would expire in 4/15/2018.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire April 15, 2018? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion passes. Any other nominations tonight? Hearing none. Next on the agenda is Item I, Executive Session. There's nothing scheduled tonight. So before we adjourn, I'd like to invite City Council to offer some closing comments. We'll begin with Councilman Corbett.
Just a reminder that we do, we will resume this week office hours at the library Friday, 1 to 3. If anybody wants to stop in, make comments, questions, complaints, that sort of thing, we'll pass complaints on to the Pro-Town. It's here, sir. But anything you'd like to stop in and talk about, Fridays, 1 to 3 at the library. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton, Mark Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. You actually said something earlier that I kind of want to repeat back. You talked about how active and engaged our residents are, both in the allocation of resources as well as the direction of the city. And I kind of want to piggyback on that great comment, because we're going to be rolling out something over the next week or so that is going to allow our residents to be even more active as far as the allocation of resources go. We're actually going to open up Twitter as a method of reporting potholes in the city. And so our staff is going to be monitoring the official Twitter page, so just tweet the Madison Heights official Twitter page with the hashtag. I believe we're still identifying the hashtag, but Ben?
No, I think you can announce that.
Okay. #MadHeightsFix, M-A-D-H-T-S-Fix. And you'll be able to tweet the intersection as to where that pothole is, or even take a picture of it, tweet that to us live, and in real time, we'll be able to respond. We'll be able to direct city resources appropriately and get that pothole filled as quickly as possible. So, you know, again, to your point, Mayor Hartwell, we have incredibly active and engaged residents. Hopefully, this will then empower anybody with a smartphone to help us find and locate the places in our city that we need to give a little bit of TLC to, so that way it can be as incredible of a city as we all want it to be.
Thank you. Anything further?
That's it, Your Honor.
Councilman Robert Gettys?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Joe, maybe you can help me out with this. The rec department's having a fun run, I believe, on Saturday. Is it April 16? Okay. Registration's still open. So we've still taken reservations at the rec department for the fun run. I think it's a 3.1 over the golf course in the neighborhood in that area. So for all the runners out there, feel free to sign up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, just one item. While we were here in the meeting, I did receive a NICSIL alert that our police department administrative phone lines are temporarily out of service. So I would remind the public that please only use 911 for emergency calls, and we're working to get the regular phones up as soon as possible. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Ms. Sanchez?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Richard Clark?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman David Soltis?
I usually don't get this that quickly since Martine's gone, but that's not a knock. I love hearing her talk. So, and to piggyback on the engaged citizens, the American Islamic Community Center brought over some refreshments for everybody to have. Baklaba, that's Councilman Corbett's favorite, so it's over there. Hurry up before he gets it. So we appreciate that. We appreciate the work that the multicultural board's doing with them. One of our board members, Archie, fantastic member. He's got so much wealth of information about multiculturalism, and so he's been networking with them. So we appreciate them bringing us some goodies. Second, we're still working on the vapor, is that vapor ordinance? So that should be out pretty soon. I'm looking forward to hearing or reading that. I think it's something that's necessary to protect the minor kids in the city. And my son is here. He managed through this, was about 40 minutes, so appreciate Robert showing up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmen. I just want to thank Local Cub Scout Troop 1587 out at Lessinger Elementary, who joined me and members of staff and City Council for a tour of City Hall tonight. They were second graders, I think they were all second graders at Lessinger, but they wrote a bunch of questions for City Council to answer about programs for youth in the city. So I figured I'll spread those out for you guys to answer and respond. But that's all. Thanks for joining us tonight, and we'll see you at the next regular City Council meeting. Meeting's adjourned.[1645.91][1645.91]